We're ready to go whenever you are. Okay, everybody, welcome to the October 11th, 2018 work session of the Penn Field Planning Board. Allison, please call and roll.
Hetske?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Knauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Weiser?
Here.
Alright, with that all taken care of, we have some minutes from our September 27th work session that hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to review. Maybe we can entertain a motion to...
I'll second.
Alright.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay, Zach, you want to go through our table applications?
You got it. We have one application with updates tonight, and that's for Delta Sonic. The rest of the applications on the agenda require no action from the board tonight, so I'm gonna jump right into Delta Sonic's application. This is for the expansion of the overall use on the property where we're including the vehicle vacuum stations now. We have a cluster at the north end of the site that's the existing Delta Sonic. They've acquired the site to the south. And we'll repurpose it for both indoor vacuum stations as well as outdoor ones along the southern property line. The board issued a tabling resolution asking for a number of things, and we're trying to recapture all of them here for you now on the landscape plan. The first thing I'll point out is that originally, the southern vacuum stations were in this area here, closest to the southeast corner, near Empire Boulevard. They've been shifted back on the property more in line with the building, and they're showing an enclosure around this vacuum blower system here that services these stations. They've also increased the amount of green space on the site. They have relocated their monument sign that was once here, and now is relocated further to the south. It does not require a setback variance, it complies with the 20-foot setback. They've also addressed some of the traffic circulation concerns the board had. They've shown one-way traffic around the building. There was a two-way arrow here that's been removed. The drying stalls, when you leave the tunnel, and you can see the pavement markings, indicate that if you're getting the vehicle dried, you're gonna go towards this area. Again, one-way traffic only, there's not an opportunity for through-traffic here like the previous version of the plan showed. Go through the drying stations, and if you care to get your vehicle vacuumed out, you go do that yourself. You have the ones to the south that are open as well, employee parking here now. Let's see here, other changes and updates that we have?
That hasn't changed to a one-way entrance at the south end. It's both two ways so that vehicles can enter in off Empire Boulevard and go to the vacuum building or stations.
Correct.
Without going through the drive stations, correct?
Correct, this is a two-way entrance. They will have to get a, you know, they're gonna have to get a permit from the DOT anyways to close a permit here. We're reviewing this right now. The town engineer, he's reviewing some of his concerns for drainage, runoff accumulation rather from vehicles. Historically, car washes in general, especially this location here at this existing exit, pavement tends to deteriorate very quickly in the winter months, and it's hard to maintain even through the summer. And this being a state road, they're looking at, they're trying just to investigate if there's any opportunities other than re-grading to improve the runoff collection from the vehicles sitting there, and how that water's collected so it doesn't become an icing or a maintenance issue for pavement. So they're gonna look at the same thing here as well. Obviously, you wouldn't expect a vehicle to be as wet when you get to this point, but if they skip the drying process and leave the tunnel, they're just taking a straight shot back out to Empire Boulevard. And obviously, there is some queuing there sometimes.
Right.
But overall, the circulation has improved, so you would enter the site either go to the car wash or the gas station convenience store, or you're there for the detail service. You come in one way to use all those services. And as you said, AJ, if you're just there to use these vacuums or these ones which are for the membership service only, you do have this entrance available. And then, once you're done with the other services, the main exit is still here at the midway point of the site, and you still have a secondary exit here.
Parking.
Parking, based on zoning, is compliant, they're providing 50, they require 39. And then...
The whole, the whole project?
Yep, includes both parcels, so you look at the total. And they have provided the excessive, actually, an excess.
That's without any adding, any new ones on?
Well, they're gaining parking here at the southern site, right down here. And they're gaining parking here as well. So doing a real...
They've got approximately 11 to 15 cars over there parked right now in that big, where the building is.
Yep.
So you're saying they're picking up parking, I understand how they're gonna do it. They have a new building there, and all those dryers.
Well, these are parking spaces here for employees. We have more parking here for employees, six more here. I believe there's a total of six, seven there. Eight, can't count. And then, have the existing 11 here, seven to the rear as well.
Yeah, but those are for customers at the front of the store.
Yep.
For employees, right? They're supposed to...
These are for customers, yeah. This is customer, this is typically customer as well, because if you gotta drop off your vehicle for detail...
Pictures default.
Yep.
When I go in there, it's always fall in the back and the front. Nine chances out of 10, you won't even find a parking spot to go in the store. Most people gas up on these cars at the gas pumps.
Yep.
So where's the detailed shop, Matt?
Uh, right here.
I'm trying to look at, okay, so the two arrows going in, that's where the car's going?
Yep.
What about oil changes?
That takes place in this area as well. This is your, this is the tunnel.
Okay. Okay.
I'll also note that the landscape plan that we got here was sent to Bruce. He looked at it, issued a few comments back to the applicant. But overall, they are technical in nature, not anything overwhelming.
So ultimately, with parking, they're increasing the number of spaces available?
Correct.
With the new proposal?
Correct. Because now the site is getting larger, so they're providing parking.
So they still have vacuum stations along the front?
Yep, 10.
Then along, outside, along the south?
Yep.
And then they've got the enclosure, so they didn't reduce the number of vacuum stations?
No.
What is it, 32 total?
32 total. And the sound study was updated as well, as I'm sure you saw, to kind of clean up the study. It reexamined this locate, with the vacuums in this location now and its impacts towards the neighboring properties, mainly Royal Dynasty is immediately to the south, so that was reviewed again. The conclusion of the sound study was that at peak hours for the noise generated, it's from site noise, basically from like the traffic generated from Empire Boulevard and the site itself, compared to the noise generated from all of the vacuums going simultaneously, at most, pretty much all the points, there was not a net increase overall.
I was out at the Delta in Henleyetta over the weekend, and I'd agree with that. And that's not as busy as this road, but it was still, was that West Henleyetta Road?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You couldn't receive anything at the road outside of road noise, and this was noon, 1 o'clock. So yeah, okay, I'm satisfied with the research, you're in all right. I had a problem with that at first, but no one could.
And as I added, here, they provide a sound enclosure around this one. There's nothing on this one right now, so that was gonna be a question for the board. If not for noise, if it was a visual concern of the board for seeing the mechanical elements outside there. I mean, they are attempting to buffer it here with plantings, so that does come into play. It's just a question I have to ask regarding the visual...
That's existing, correct?
No.
The one to the...
Anything's now?
Exists.
That's where you're, yeah, that's the spot where those dryers are gonna be in front. Those are usually, that's where usually cars park to go into the store.
Nothing here exists now, except for landscape.
Okay.
This is all, this is still proposed, new as well.
They use it for parking, Zach.
So people parallel park or...
Yeah, yeah.
Today, people park there.
There's like four or five cars usually parked there to use the store, because there's no other parking in front.
So what was...
And now they're gonna put dryers there, I'm sorry, I mean, there goes those parking spots.
Probably, just like gas stations, you'll probably see people park there.
So what was the question about that feature at the top?
Basically, my question for the board, just looking at it from a visual standpoint, because the noise generated from here wasn't found to be a negative impact in the sound study.
Okay.
If the board wanted to just, if there was any visual improvement, the board wanted to...
Having an enclosure around it?
Yes.
Is there a detail of the enclosure?
Yes, there is in the detail.
Of the other one, there is, yeah.
It's easier, I went through the plan set, it was easier to find.
And then some type of elevation of the vacuum on its own, so that...
It's this.
We can see what, what they look like, with it without. Sometimes the enclosures are more visually impactful than just the equipment.
Since that enclosure was gonna kind of be pushed in the back, next to the dumpster enclosure with the fence, we weren't really proposing anything.
Anything attractive?
Architecturally, like, really enhanced or anything for that one. Our thought would be, it'd be a building at the entrance. We'd rather really attempt with nice landscaping to try to do the visual buffing, so it kind of looks a little nicer than more of a dense block building.
Soft shrubs and put to camouflage it with shrubs.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
How many units are in there, right in front of the store?
Like 10?
10.
10, that many?
10, eight, and then 16 in the building.
I mean, a front, long front, the Empire Boulevard there?
10. 10. There's a number.
14 in the building.
Yeah, that's 16.
14, sorry. Hey, Zach. It's been a day.
I thought you were good engineers.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, thank you. Started out as an engineer, didn't work out well.
So they're gonna go the whole length of the frontage of Empire Boulevard?
That they have today, yeah.
But there's another landscape plan out for the call.
There, yeah, there's minimal landscaping, a few trees, I think.
Yeah, there's like little shrubs and stuff.
We'll see.
I'd like to see if they could do, you know, that's a lot. I don't know why they, you know, I mean, really blacks the place.
There you go. That's what kind of looks like today. So you have a landscape element there now, but all of this would be enhanced, as well as across the front.
So that becomes parking, or...
This becomes vacuums.
Parking comes in 20 feet of that.
You use this...
I go to Panorama, so...
You know, I can't say that, you know, I've been here, but I'm not a regular there.
I don't know how they can get them. First of all, I don't think it looks good, because it's in the front of it, reflects the view of, you know, the black, the view. I mean, so now you have all these, there's an Empire Boulevard. And then, if they're taking those parking spots that they presently use, and they use them because it's always busy, people leave their cars at the gas pumps, there's no place else to park. And there's really not a lot of room there anyways to get into the gas pumps, you know, because everybody, you know, some people have their gas tanks on the right, some on the left, so they're always cruising around to get the, you know, to the right pump. There's not a lot of room between that front del area where they park cars, where these containers are gonna go. No, there's not a lot of room there between the pumps and there. I don't even know how they're gonna get them in there.
Site plan might have...
If they're ankles on them. I mean, it's gonna be tight.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna wind up with actually 39 feet now of clearance going from the end of the pump to where the vacuums are gonna start, because the vacuums are going inside the curb line.
Are you gonna...
Yeah, we're putting them in there, and then it's gonna, it'll actually make it better, so then if we have those spaces, as Zach mentioned, people do use them also for parking as well. We don't regulate them until someone, you've been for 20 minutes, you have to leave or stuff like that. But also, then it will keep those cars, and as you're saying, that parallel park there, which then kind of opens up that drag lane, provides for better circulation there. With parallel parking, you're probably down to about 22 to 20 feet probably existing, there's cars there.
Yep.
Now it'll be up to about 30 to 35 with the drag lane there. And then these are gonna be, it's gonna be the similar look to what we have at West Ridge Road.
Right.
As well, with what's out front. We don't do them as a heavy structure. We try to do them so they're more open, they got the little canopy up, so we don't give a long wall across the front to block it. We open it up so you can still see through the whole structure, then you go to see the gas can being and everything behind it, the store and all that as well.
Yeah, we had some photos of what it looked like from a different location, I think?
Yes, probably the West Ridge Road location.
I don't know if it was West Ridge, it looked a little different.
Did you pull those up, you got them?
It could have been just, you know what, actually, it might have been one in Buffalo, or maybe...
I think so, it was in the file.
Well, right now in Delta Good and Town, when there's people parked along Panorama, it's really, really tight.
It's very tight.
Yeah.
So it looks like there's gonna be like another 20 feet here.
Well, they're gonna, because he's gonna dig into that, I mean, because it's wider where the landscaping is now, so you're gonna, so they're gonna dig that up. But there goes less of the landscaping to make room for these, all these vacuums, the 16 vacuums.
Try elevations or actual correspondence.
What are you looking for?
The photos that Matt, that Matt was explaining. Go to applicant correspondence, please. There you go, submitted photos. Just open one and toggle through.
Get those big little loops or whatever.
Yeah, this is kind of tough to see.
Which one is this, West Ridge?
I think so.
No, this might be our transit road location.
Yeah, it's not West Ridge.
Transit road clearance.
Okay.
But that's what's gonna...
But that's the same one as, that's the same book as the West Ridge Road.
So this is what it's gonna look like similar?
Yes.
Now, they don't have a sidewalk there, right? And they're not required to put a sidewalk in?
There's a sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk.
You know, why reduce the, what are you talking, 32?
Number, yes.
No variance are required, right? None?
Correct. They have lock coverage complies, parking complies. This board's reviewing the expansion to conditional use.
And there's a sound fence going up on the southern border.
Correct. It'll terminate just beyond the vacuum stations.
Sort of turns northeast that way?
Looks like it.
Angles northeast to block...
It's a six-foot sound fence or...
Yes.
And what's it made out of?
Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, that was a, was that a wooden board-on-board?
Uh, should be actually solid board.
Solid board?
Board-on-board doesn't do as good on the sound, so we use solid board for sound.
I'm trying to remember what was used in Panorama Plaza, because they put up...
There's a retaining wall, then they put an eight-foot fence above it, but that required a variance fence. Solid board fence.
Yeah, six-foot high is what we were proposing for that.
Could they go here? Should they go here?
It'll require a variance.
If we're asking for it.
I think... Do you have an existing fence out there today?
Would it be better or worse?
I can't, that one I don't know, because it'd be on the other...
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm not sure what's between the dry cleaner now of Royal Dynasty.
Because it's gonna be really visual.
Driving there, I don't...
I don't remember, I don't think there's one.
It'd be just the rest, I don't remember. You have to say the rest.
So you want a six-foot fence or...
Maybe they could put video panels and show like, I don't know.
That's a sign.
Like you're driving more onto the...
That'd be a sign variance.
So if you're sitting at Royal Dynasty, you could look out and see like, you know, video of China and Hong Kong.
Traffic circulation on that one side is a little weird, but where do you go if you come in? Sign, you come in, you, yeah, you have to turn around and leave. So I guess you just follow one way.
When you come here and work here.
Yeah, so right, now we're about, if you come in here and then you go straight?
This?
Yeah.
It's straight so you can get in here?
Oh, okay.
There may have to be a do not enter sign somewhere here, so people don't accidentally do something stupid.
Go backwards through the car.
But, I mean, this is, this is designed to bring you in here and back out and go, because they got the width.
Yeah.
It's a good point, we do not enter sign at the west end of the enclosed vacuum building?
And also probably at this point here.
Even on the east end, we could put the sign up like right at the start of the vacuum building, and just say do not enter, there.
Same here, Matt?
Nope, down where the enclosure is, around the motors, like right there.
Oh, yeah.
You have a little space there so we can, right there.
So after this is constructed as part of the final certificate of compliance or whatever, would there...
Sorry.
Would we want to ask for field measurements as built for those sound levels? Or, because I know it's modeled, but modeling and reality are two different things.
AJ, I'm gonna ask you on this one, have you recorded that in the past? Because of the projects I've done, we have not recorded that.
Not that I remember. I know we've always, when it's been an issue, we've had significant studies ahead of time.
Yeah.
You never...
Okay.
That's typically...
Not to my knowledge, and after the fact one. And I don't know if we've ever gotten any complaints after the fact.
And maybe that's...
Other than from...
Other activities.
Other activities, not activities like this.
And I would say, if there was a noise complaint, say even after you built Royal Dynasty, and it falls within the town's code for that, at no point are we gonna come back and ever say, well, we submitted a noise study as part of the application. My understanding, that doesn't relieve us if it comes back in six months later, 10 years later, Royal Dynasty or someone else is complaining, we're still required to comply with the code and make any corrections to the compliance, I would think.
It's conditional use as well, correct? So we have some...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it probably makes sense to put in something that if there, if there is an issue, and they do need to prove that those studies, that they're in compliance with what the studies suggested.
That could be in your findings with conditional use.
That could be something I would put in.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know...
So that would trigger that, that testing only if it became an issue.
If it became an issue, yeah, that works, okay.
Do you mind if I ask Matt another question while he's here?
Go ahead.
Matt, the motors are proposed to run, be available, I'm sorry, from 7:00 to 9:00, Monday through Sunday. Yep. Is it 7:00 AM on and stay on, like you hear the motors going? Or is it like an on-demand system where someone calls for it when they grab a nozzle, and then they keep, then they rev up?
It goes on in the morning and then it shuts off at night, so it's...
Continuous.
It's a continuous, it's on, yes.
Okay.
The only thing that's not though is the, because each one, everything works off of the motor, so there's no like on or off switch or anything. What gets kind of triggered in is the nozzle, just because they're all, they have holders in there that'll seal up. That gets pulled out by the person, and they get to use it, but I don't believe that they have to turn anything on then to activate that, because it's a single power motor for the whole system, not an individual motor at each location.
Okay.
So you got 32 running all the time?
All of them working, it's gonna be a constant?
Noise.
The same noise?
It's the same, it's the same noise, yes, out of the motor, regardless of if there's one person there or eight. So as more people use it, the noise doesn't increase from the motor. The motor doesn't start to get louder as there's more, it's just, so what we studied and what we provided, it's not like two people using it, it's at this level, nine people are using it, it's at this level. It just provides the same.
So you got 32 going constantly at this level?
No, no, we have...
Three.
In the enclosure, we have the motors for the south and the indoor vacuum building are in there. And then we have another motor for the ones up there. So there's only a total of two locations with motors, which is what we have found is better versus the old systems where each vacuum itself had its own.
One other question, the three lanes, now you want to increase from two to three lanes? Is that the, I'm trying to think of the locations, are any other ones three-lane jet in the Monroe County area?
Grease is at least three.
It opened up three.
Yeah, Grease is three out there. And honestly, our goal is every location is to get as many, we'll do four. At places, we just, we try to get as much as we can for more stacking to pull the cars in and get them out. We're stacking farther back, really, is the biggest thing we try to do. And then we add the prep pots, we add the double prep pot, because that lets us get more cars in as well, because by getting, the tunnel can do it, a lot of times, some of the bigger things is also doing notice. You'll see the cars get sprayed down, and someone will be there for 45 or 60 seconds sometimes on certain cars spraying it down, so the double prep pot also helps us to increase getting those cars in and quicker as well. So it's all trying to get more stacking to pull the traffic away from the front, and then let the cars get serviced a little bit with our prep pots.
Yeah, today it's one and going to two wide.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's easier when, you know, trying to nudge the person next to you, if you got two people, go ahead, or, you know, go ahead. But when you got four, you're looking here, everybody, if you ever put in that situation, you're all nudging up, and like, okay, who's gonna be the first guy in? Who's gonna, now you got third, fourth guy trying to nudge.
It's like trying to go over a bridge in New York City.
Tunnels, tunnels are the worst.
It's like having your gas pedal, right?
20 cars wide going to one, one lane.
Call it the pinch point, there's gonna be two. It's gonna be coming out of the two interior abu's there.
The hut.
Yep, and then coming out of the hut, and that's where cars, with everything we're doing there, the cars are going very, very slow at that point, so it's...
You gotta, you don't want to be driving too fast when you're coming around that bend.
Well, the hut that'll stop, will also stop people then, because they'll be getting sprayed down. So then they're doing the zipper, basically, one comes from each, each side.
Oh, there, people are pretty courteous though, really kind.
You haven't seen it when it's busy.
I haven't done that with you with you.
I keep my car ran.
So it's the...
Yeah, I've seen pretty much mostly friendlies in Panorama. Maybe it's the North Pennfielders that are not as friendly.
Down in Penn...
That's all people from Webster, really, that are going, you know, coming in on the town.
Shots across the board.
Delta Sonic. Yeah, my daughter's a Webster person now.
I can say it, it's okay now.
I guess.
We got one sitting here too, yikes.
Alright, so people from Webster aren't that bad.
That's fantastic. I'm trying to go through anything else that I had. Snow storage was identified on the site plan through Bill in a couple of locations.
Jockeying position.
The only other comment I would have for the board, unless you guys have other stuff to debate, was with the sound study, like again, it measured noises at the peak hours. So we see peak traffic conditions, which is around 6:00 PM, along with the three, three motors running.
What's it gonna do at 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, 3:00 PM?
From 6:00 to, or rather like 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 PM, what is that noise without the background noise level? Was something that the engineer, ourselves as engineers were looking at.
Aren't they closed down at that point?
9:00?
7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, right?
You can still get a car wash at 9:00 PM, gas is usually open even later.
Well, we'll find out. I don't think it's gonna be an issue. I was at the ambient, I basically, you don't even hear it, but maybe because of the ambient, bad-bad noise.
Does like...
And that's, that's...
You're a head-rider guy.
Did you have earplugs in or anything, or...
No.
You don't want to become a head-rider, trust me.
No, I was just out there for now.
Taking shots at every town tonight. Who else have we talked about?
Oh, I'm sure there's plenty.
I could talk about Grease for days, so...
Alright. What other concerns do people have? No, you got concerns about the parking.
Yeah, I think it's just, I think it's, yeah, the parking's gonna be a mess, and I think there's too many vacuum cleaners. I don't think we need 32, so...
I have to say, I'm ambivalent on that.
It's a key question for the board, is that number, Matt?
I don't know what their number is, I'm not in that business.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying, feel the same way.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, does it seem like a lot of vacuums? Yeah, 32 at the same time? Yeah, does, does it seem like a lot of, uh, vacuums? Yeah, 32 at the same time? But I, I agree with you, Phil. I'm not, I'm not in that business. So.
I'm all set.
So at that point, hearing that, um-
We want to start a-
Could start a draft.
Draft.
Proble. I'll try to obtain any more information from, uh, engineers and DOT, any correspondents regarding the southern exit. If that layout has to be modified in any way, um, make sure it's good for two-way traffic. Because previously this site had one in, had two curb cuts, so just trying to confirm that that's what they need. Um, they'll make the necessary landscape changes based on Bruce's memo. And... I think that's all I have.
All right, anything else? From you guys?
Nope.
Motion, start a draft.
Second.
And table one?
Table, yeah.
That's for the plan. There we go.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Bastian?
Hi.
Kenauer?
Hi.
Tiding?
Hi.
All right. All right. No other, no miscellaneous, no nothing.
None.
Anybody else have any new business? I don't know why I'm asking. You never do.
Usually it's us. Usually it's us.
We all enjoy. Thanks everyone for coming.